Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The date is October 10th, 2016. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of Madison Heights. The time is 7:30. So let's begin with a roll call.
Councilman, Mayor Portembliss, sorry.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Corbett. Councilman Gettings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
And Mayor, Mayor Hartwell.
Yes, I'm here. Can I please have a motion to excuse Councilman Robert Corbett from tonight's meeting?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor of excusing Councilman Corbett from tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Please rise if you're able or willing for an invocation to be given by Councilman Gettings, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. All right. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right. Next, we have a presentation. It's a proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week, which will run from October 9th to 15th. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. Whereas the city of Madison Heights is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Madison Heights, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority, or 84 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas all smoke alarms should be checked yearly and be replaced at least once every 10 years, and whereas the Madison Heights Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council does hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and urges all residents to check their smoke alarms and replace them if they're more than 10 years old. Be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to participate in the many fire safety activities being held during the Fire Department's open house on Saturday, October 15th, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I believe the fire chief is here tonight.
Will the chief please come and accept this proclamation? We have a pair of business licenses tonight. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I would make a motion that the business license initial, any business license temporary and seasonal be adopted. Number one, S&amp;E Imports, a clothing shop at 1460 East 12 Mile Road. This is a new business. Any temporary and seasonal, Paul Littori Christmas Tree Lot at 30728 John R. Road. And I believe this business has been here ever since I've been here, selling Christmas trees.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gettings?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? All right. A motion was made by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to adopt the business licenses subject to departmental ordinance requirements for item A1 initial, S&amp;E Imports, and A1 temporary seasonal, which is Paul Littori Christmas Tree Lot. Is there any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motions carry. No public hearings tonight. Are there reports on agenda of interest to parties in the audience? Okay, we'll go meeting open to the public. Now is the time for any of you to address City Council on any subject. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. We also ask that any comments are directed to the chair and not directed to any other council people. It's helpful, but it's not required if you give your name, address, and affiliation, if you're with an organization or a business, but that's not required. And just keep it in a spirit of constructive debate. Ms. Moore, welcome to City Hall. How can I help you?
Well, Gloria Moore, I live at 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is going to have their October 3rd Tuesday meeting, October 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at Wilkinson Middle School. Snacks are provided, and every one is welcomed. Also, we're holding an ice cream kit raffle, and that's going to be at our November 3rd Tuesday meeting. Anybody wishes to have a senior win this ice cream kit can either come to the meetings and put their name in, or we've got a Facebook page that they could put the name in, and we will raffle off the kit. Also, Cambridge East Nursing Home is still needing volunteers, and we're willing to, you know, will forward any information of any volunteers to Cambridge Nursing Home. And we're looking forward to doing an exciting Christmas project for them.
Great. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Courtney Pratt Sanders. I live on Gothrie Avenue in Madison Heights. I'm a spokesperson for Michigan's Political Action Committee for Animals. We've been here before you in the past. As a Madison Heights resident, as well as a professional spokesperson for our organization, I'm here tonight because a week ago today, we had a shooting in Madison Heights, and we have been contacted by an enormous number of residents in Madison Heights who are incredibly concerned about the situation and how it's going to be handled in Madison Heights. We understand that charges have not yet been filed, and we do realize that's up to the prosecutor's office. However, this is our body of government who we have elected to keep us safe in this community, and an egregious incident like this needs to be taken very seriously, especially considering that the shooter is supposedly involved in law enforcement, and I actually think that makes this even worse, because that person should know better. So I'm here tonight to encourage you to look into the story and situation if you're not yet familiar with it. Channel 7 did cover it last week. I think you'll see additional news coverage as time goes on. So I'm again here tonight to bring you, make sure you're aware of the situation, make sure that you please look into it, and understand that our residents are incredibly upset and concerned for their safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Please come now. Hi. Good evening.
My name is Lauren Foster. I am the owner of the pet that was shot a week ago Monday. I am a new member of the Madison Heights community, and I wanted to come here today to kind of give you an idea of how I feel and how I hope that you may encourage action to be taken, because I was very excited to move here with my fiancee, just starting medical school, and building a life together, and for this kind of tragedy to happen in your backyard is really unspeakable and unfortunate. And we just really hope that something will happen so that we have some sort of peace of mind while we're living in this community. Other than that, we have had great support from our neighbors on this cause. We have neighbors here today. We have wonderful individuals like Courtney, and I just don't understand how someone could shoot a non-threatening animal, and especially to have the gun then pointed on myself within the vicinity of my own yard is so scary. And I just hope that you guys may think about it, try and put yourselves in our positions, and hopefully really push something to happen and make us feel a little more welcome in this community.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mr. Sherman?
I'd like to clarify for the benefit of the many folks that are in the audience, people watching at home and for the council, that this matter was investigated by the Madison Heights Police Department and was referred to the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office because the matter involved a weapon and potential felony charges. Therefore, we as city prosecutors are not involved in the case. The matter is an open investigation. It would not be appropriate for anyone to comment on it, and the matter's in the hands of the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office.
Would anyone else like to address City Council? The meeting's open to the public. This is the public's opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mary Bush. I live at 1117 East Hudson. I understand that fall is the time of goal-setting for fiscal year 1718. Next November, Mayor Hartwell, Councilman Bliss, Soltis, and Clark will be up for reelection. I am heartened that most of you are in the mid-morning of your career in public service. I am pleased by the practical visibility of your dedicated service to our city. Your vision and energy is a breath of fresh air. I took some time to reflect on my 24 years as a resident here. I woke up to local affairs when our neighborhood green space was threatened last year. Now I'm fascinated by how that could have happened, and there's no more sleeping behind the wheel for me when it comes to city governance. I then looked at the organization of the city, reviewed all available information on all the citizens advisory boards, which are listed at the end of the agenda today, and reviewed some external assessments on how others saw our city. And kudos, by the way, to whoever wrote that budget report and all of you who have read it. That is a monster document and filled with wonderful information, so thank you for doing that. To kind of summarize for the people here and for you, Mr. Mayor, just to remind you of who you serve for the Madison Heights demographics. We are only 30,000 people with a growth of 1% to 2% per year. We're still recovering from some of the 7% losses that we had during the housing crisis. 51% of the citizens here are women, 49% are men, half are married, the median age is 40, they're earning $41,000 annually, 62% own their home, 37% rent. There are only 2.3 people per house, and the house is worth about $80,000, even though household incomes are about $85,000, which means you have frugal people living here. We're not leveraged to the max with our mortgage. 80% have a high school diploma, 22% have a college education. We're mostly white, but 20% are Asian, African-American, or Hispanic, so we're growing in our cultural diversity. Only 5.8% are unemployed, which is above the national average of 4.6, but much lower than the 19% unemployment rate that Madison Heights had in 2010. Yet, 20% of our population here lives at poverty level, and 47% of the kids in Madison District Public Schools qualify for aid due to poverty. We have pockets of low-income citizens. The average test scores in the schools are 18% lower than the national average, and the school scores are themselves at 56%. This paints a picture of who you are developing these goals of the city for. I found the city has many strengths. The DPS is outstanding. It sustains and maintains all services that they are responsible for, so that for the most part, it's invisible to the citizenry. The Parks and Rec Citizen Board meets regularly, reflects the city's commitment to its youth and seniors, the parks plan for and collaborated with Oakland County so that our park system is almost perfect for our little city, and drives people from outside of the city to come use the services here. The fire and police reflect a level, a caliber of professionalism and competency that we can be proud of here. Again, the citizen advisory boards are strong and participatory. The Animal Control Officer is an outstanding collaborator with local rescues, volunteers, and has taken steps to become self-sufficient through direct adoption, and actively advocates for city ordinances that protect our critters. You can see a pattern of healthy vitality of the department with active citizen involvement. Regular and productive meetings with department heads who know how to use and leverage, I haven't here "how to lose average," but I meant leverage, darn spell correct, knows how to leverage the citizen's support. Here's the challenges that I see him for City Council, Mr. Mayor. The city management team seems to reflect kind of an introverted style, applauding, solid, committed to minimizing risk and maintaining the status quo, which is why it really is up to the City Council to demonstrate leadership that inspires citizens to action, like what happened with the transformation of Gravel Park. Council members listened, saw an opportunity, and acted. Yes, it may change in the future, but for the next couple of years, people can enjoy the green space. The management team keeps the ship afloat. The City Council charts the course of where it's going. If we use the city of progress as our guidance, the term sustainability is required. It's the ability to continue a defined behavior indefinitely. As a city, we need to make sure our renewable revenue resources use, that make sure our renewable revenue resources use and don't exceed our ability to generate them. One is only to look at Highland Park, Detroit, and Flint to see bad planning. We are laid out like a middle-aged and smaller city of Novi. We are not structurally like Ferndale, Claussen, and Royal Oak, and we would be foolish to try and emulate them and all of the problems that come with an economy built on disposable income. We need to be a little-bedroom community, the place that people love to come home to. We need happy little parks for the homes and businesses that are here. We need to be, have smart, efficient, resident, and business citizen-oriented city who assures a safe, safe, comfortable, and vibrant neighborhood, no matter what your income. It seems to me that we need to focus on improving the livability of the city in terms of jobs, safety, education, housing, and amenities, and then manage our growth, recognizing the limits of sustainability. I suggest that the following areas be developed, and I'm sorry I might have gone over three minutes, but I promise I'm almost done. I suggest the following areas be developed. The DDA, the Downtown Development Authority, could be expanded to cover business development in the entire city. There is nothing on our city webpage or social media that promotes Madison Heights as a great place to do business. We need to build our brand and partner with Pure Michigan and do a better job with the local Chamber of Commerce. We need to identify all the empty and underutilized commercial and industrial properties and actively partner with the owners to bring them up to a 97% occupancy. We need to, number two, we need to support job growth in the city as part of the above. Madison Heights has a projected job growth of 34% over the next 10 years, which is faster than average. Most of our jobs, 30%, are concentrated in sales, office, and administration. These are typically lower-paying service-sector jobs. Only 14% of Madison Heights industry is in light industry of production, transportation, and materials. The rest of it is all 10% in areas like medical, education, governance, and small pieces. We could focus on making the city attractive to higher-wage jobs. Number three, while parks and library are both less than $1 million budget each, less than 5% of the total budget each, they make up a huge part of the quality of life here. Parks could partner with Oakland County Master Gardeners Program to create community gardens, rain gardens, eco-friendly parks, practices like using clover instead of grass, which would reduce maintenance costs for DPS. We could make the parks not only functional, but pretty too. We could have topiary and art in the parks, some things to attract that 40-year-old woman, half of whom are single and trending to stay that way. Number four, the Environmental Advisory Board is virtually comatose, and I remember a time when it was very active. It's how they shut down the incinerator. Where are the butterfly garden promotions? I gave Councilman Soltis a brochure that I picked up when I was at the Novi environmental meeting that they had, and it says, "Make Novi a butterfly city." If we had those kinds of promotions here, we could answer questions like the eco-friendly lawn care guides for reducing chemicals in our watersheds. What happened to the Reduce, Reuse, Recycle campaign? Because recycling is mandatory here, but you wouldn't know it by the number of recycle bins on my block. We need the council members to breathe some inspirations to these groups. Over the summer, in many town halls, I met several people who would support the engagement, especially in the environment. A city goal would create a context for that kind of participation and action. Number five, why not have the city webpages, in the city webpages, a way to donate for favored projects? Parks and Recs already does this. If you look at the Parks and Recs webpage, it has a donate page, a donate link, that you can actually send money to the Parks and Rec Department. The library program and seniors could do this too. I had suggested it at one point for the library. Revenue can come from more than just taxes. Philanthropy, matching fund grants would help, and by the way, the advisory board on community block grants is also kind of lackluster. That could be a huge portion of how we bring revenue into the city that would not necessarily be tax-based. Yes, I'm well aware that this is going to take increased citizen involvement, and with your leadership and making big requests to people, they will come. Right now, many of the citizen boards have their hearts ready to serve. You were elected to lead us. Creating and communicating a unified vision and setting goals we must all get behind is the key to making it work. Please consider my words when you develop a collaborative vision for Madison Heights for the next 10 to 15 years, because it is from that vision that you will set the goals for the next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. I appreciate the comments. Would anyone else like to address City Council? The meeting's still open for comments on any subject. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Michael Andring. I live at 27382 Palmer Boulevard. I've lived here for about a year. It's nice to finally meet all of you guys. I am the fiancee of the woman that was just up here, Lauren, of the dog that got shot. And I just wanted to bring an awareness to the whole situation. We have a ton of support in the whole back section, and we have a lot of friends that we just met in the small year that we've been here. And I also wanted to point out that today, the judge referred us to come back here and said that the city might be able to take action on the smaller offenses such as discharging a firearm in a city limit. So that's why we're here. So we wanted to bring awareness to the whole situation. Also, our dog is outside for anybody that wants to meet her, mingle with her, so.
Thank you, sir. You know, I, you're welcome anytime to City Hall. You're welcome anytime to contact any council member individually. City manager has an open-door policy, even the city attorney, Larry Sherman, who if you haven't met, and clearly, anytime a firearm's discharged in the city, it affects everyone in the community.
Absolutely.
We're very concerned about this. You know, I know you came here because you're worried. Your fiancee spoke about, you know, very important emotions of she's looking for a secure home. She's worried about her environment. We all are.
Yeah.
And, you know, these type of incidents impact the entire city. Now, as elected officials, our jobs are limited. I think you can understand that I, as the mayor, and my council colleagues, we can't directly tell the police chief or police officers how to do their job. I mean, you could see the slippery slope if I suddenly called the police chief and say, "Go investigate this guy."
Absolutely.
Or, you know, "Let my brother off." So I, you're not going to get that response from the elected leaders tonight that we're going to go out and justice will be served. But I will let you know that we are animal rights advocates. As the leader of my pack, Courtney Pratt Sanders, has introduced, you know, legislation to us that, and we slowly learn more and more about how important animals are to our society, and it is very complex, because it also involves constitutional issues, issues of due process. You know, everyone deserves a procedure to be handled fairly, quickly, efficiently, and that's you and your family.
Absolutely.
That's the neighbor. He has rights. And so, you know, I'd be afraid from my end to get too specific into the facts, because I wouldn't want to harm any investigation. And maybe in the most general terms, is the only way we can communicate, especially when the microphone's running, but maybe I could ask the city attorney, in the most general terms, what it means when a case is transferred to the county, when it goes above just the small city, up into the more powerful, prepared hands of a county prosecutor. Mr. Sherman, could you please just address just simple procedures for, and thank you for being patient. I'm sorry to pick on you. No, people.
That's okay. I appreciate that.
I think Mr. Landry asked a good question, because I think I need to clarify something I said earlier too, and that is that when the investigation is sent from the investigating law enforcement agency, in this case, the Madison Heights Police Department, the county prosecutor is not just looking as to whether or not felony charges would be brought, they're enforcing state law, and so it's a wide-ranging playing field in terms of charges, including misdemeanor, any misdemeanor offenses that they believe they can prove.
Thanks for clearing that up. That was, that was a little murky.
So our jurisdiction under city ordinance is limited to misdemeanor offenses, and that's why we as city prosecutors are not involved in making a determination as to whether or not to bring charges.
Thanks for shedding light on that. I appreciate it. And if nothing else, just for everybody, just to create awareness, you know, we've only been here for a year. This has already happened. It's sad to say that we're looking to move, but it's just something that everybody needs to know about, and we're hoping to get out there, and I appreciate you guys clearing up the whole legal process for me, and it was nice meeting you guys.
And you mentioned, to be a little more civic, Mr. Mayor, that when the, when all of the pieces of the puzzle, the investigation, is turned over to the prosecutor's office, they're looking at it and making a determination as to whether there's a basis to bring criminal charges, or whether there isn't a basis to bring criminal charges, and they're looking at the, at the full gamut.
Okay.
It's the prosecutor's office that authorizes a warrant, which is the charge itself, and we don't have any direct control over what determination the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office makes relating to this particular case, or in any case that gets sent from our police department or any police agency to the county prosecutor for a determination of charges.
So you guys are pretty much completely hands-off once it gets turned over?
Yes.
Okay.
We're hands-off entirely, because we don't have authority over it once the matter gets referred to the county.
I see. Okay.
In the most general terms, we are a government of limited jurisdiction. The city is a division of the state government, and part of our limits is we may only prosecute misdemeanors, or traffic offenses, or our city code. And even then, we're capped. You know, if we prosecute a misdemeanor, it's capped at, I believe, a punishment of one year maybe, or is it even less, 90 days?
Yeah, 90 days.
But they're small stuff.
In some cases, 93 days, depending upon.
And fines, if we're out to enforce a fine, like grass has grown too much, a city is limited to the dollar amount we can fine. However, you go one step up the notch to the county, the county prosecutor is authorized to enforce all of the state criminal code. So it opens the book. It opens the range of possibilities. I'm not sure how that applies here, if it applies at all, but I don't believe that the city of Madison Heights is avoiding responsibility.
No.
In fact, I think they're asking a higher power.
Absolutely.
To, to, to take their skills and their authority to examine the facts of this case.
Right. I was just unclear if it was, like you said, once it's turned over, it's pretty much hands-off from that point. I didn't know if it was like you guys could still do anything about it or not, so thanks for clearing that up.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Scott, please.
Before, is it Mr. Landry?
My name?
Yes.
Is Andring. It's spelled A-N-D-R-I-N-G.
All right. Thank you. If I can ask the city attorney, I know you mentioned that we were not to talk about the situation, but could I ask Mr. Andring how the dog is, how he's doing?
Sure.
All right. I'm going to ask you that. How is the dog doing?
She's doing really good. Luckily, she's a young dog, so she did have to have her entire left arm taken off from the shoulder. the shoulder, and that's definitely an adjustment. She's definitely sore, but she's doing good, and she's adapting to a three-legged life, so.
All right. Well, I wanted to thank you for being here, to fill us in, and to all the people that it came on your behalf. I want to thank them as well.
Thank you so much, you guys.
And Mr. Andring, I'll keep you under the spotlight a little bit longer. I think Councilwoman Scott made an important pivot to the future. So I will completely divorce myself from whatever this case is, because I have no authority, and it would probably be improper for me to discuss what happened. But going forward, I invite you and your friends, and your fiance, and your family, and my PACA, to advise the city council on if policies or ordinances need to be developed so this doesn't happen again.
Absolutely.
Or that any sense of injustice you may experience is less likely to happen again in the future. And I think you'll find that this elected body will respond and will listen and will consider your suggestions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem.
You're off the hook. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Please come up now.
Good evening. Dawn Clayton, 27327 Dartmouth. I'm also a member of my PACA, and I'm here dressed in dog-covered fur hair, because I was at the shelter tonight, and I had to break away to come take a minute and speak with you. As a resident of the neighborhood in which things happened, I wasn't... I was working at the shelter that night. I want to say to Chief Haynes that we, as a city, have to be very careful at this point, that we are not setting a dangerous precedent. And I understand that we may not be involved on the city council level, but I think that when interviewed and when talked to, the news, I want them to understand that we do not tolerate this in the city of Madison Heights. This is not indicative of how we feel about our animals. If I have a problem with my neighbor, I want to know that we can use the civilized manners, the laws, the ordinances, the avenues that are open to us, to work through our differences without having to resort to discharging a firearm. And I just want to remind everyone that we are here to speak for the one that doesn't have a voice, and that is the victim in this situation. And Aurora, and my love to her and recovery, and we worked so hard here in the city of Madison Heights. You know, we worked so hard at the shelter to do good things, and this... We can't let this be what people see as an image of Madison Heights, of how things... How we treat our animals here. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Ashley Moritz. I am a Royal Oak resident. I'm also an educator for Lambeer Schools. My comment is about the dog case, obviously, and what I wanted to say is this: I was not present during the incident. My cousin is the dog owner, yes. I only met the dog this evening. She seemed very sweet. I have not met the accused. I absolutely understand the city attorney's statement, that it has gone above the city level. What I want to emphasize is that your power is not null and void, because this has gone into a more elaborate case. The city of Madison Heights, and what I teach my students in Madison Heights, is accountability. If I referred my students always to an incident and said, "It's out of my hands, we have to go to the school board. I can't do anything about it," that would be unfair. That would undermine my influence as a professional to draw the line on what is right and wrong. I understand that these charges and the legalities of it are now out of the city's hands, absolutely. But your influence is not negligible. I think as a resident of Royal Oak, as an employee of Madison Heights, we can do better. I don't know the exact situation. I don't know what went on, but discharging a firearm within the city is a serious, serious matter. And as the mayor of that city, I hope that it would be your greatest priority to figure out what happened, why it happened, and whether or not something should be something or someone should be held accountable for that. And if you can't do that as mayor, then we can't have a safe city. We're putting our trust in you. I understand the legalities. I also am hopeful in your position, that you will investigate this to its fullest, whatever outcome that may be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening, council. My name is Vaughn Dootierian. I live at 655 West Gerard, and I came here today to talk about some of the progress that occurred over the weekend at Gravel Park. Sunday morning, there was the Madison Heights Men's Club came out and planted some shade trees. I was there with my kids, and Gravel Park is of specific interest to me. I've been talking to the mayor about the possibility of building a new playscape on that park. I live about two, three blocks away, and I was walking past the park one day on my way to the municipal park here. I was stopped by the man that lives next to Gravel Park, and he asked me if I wouldn't rather... There was a playground right there, and I, you know, we started talking. Of course, you know, it's closer, and I thought it would be wonderful. Since then, I've done some research. I've looked into it. There's a grant from the state, a matching funds grant that can be applied for through a crowdfunding website. And once we started talking about it, once we started looking into it, the interest level in the neighborhood is very high. As we were putting the shade trees in this past Sunday, neighbors walking by would stop and tell us stories about how, when they were younger, and their kids were younger, that everybody would go and play at the park. Since I moved in about three, four years ago, there's been a number of new homes built in our area. There are four new homes that were built directly across the street from Gravel Park. There are three new homes that were built on my street at the end of Gerard, where it butts into 75. And the people moving in are all people, the single families, moving in with kids. When I'm going to and from work, I see kids running in the street, playing basketball. There's... That day that I was walking up to the municipal park here, there were three or four little girls that were riding their bikes up and down the dead-end street directly in front of Gravel Park. When this past summer, when the Pokemon Go thing was on everybody's minds, you would see groups of young children walking around on their bikes around the neighborhood. And the one thing that we don't have in the neighborhood is something like a playscape there, something to bring people together. Even though there are parks within walking distance, Municipal Park is walkable. It's about a 15, 20-minute walk. But on the weekend, you have to cross 13 Mile at a blinking yellow light. That day, Sunday, after we planted trees, I walked my kids up to the park here because they wanted to play, and we had to sprint across 13 Mile, because the traffic just doesn't really stop. When we've walked to the soccer field park, walking along John R., it's kind of, you know, kind of anxiety-inducing, because the cars drive by really quickly. You're right up there next to the traffic. There's not a big barrier, and there's no... There's no way to get to that park without walking along a major road. Just this past summer, there was a woman, I believe, in Roseville, walking along Grashit to a park. She had a kid, one kid that was walking with her, one child in a stroller, and she was struck by a car on the sidewalk. And this, you know, the car veered off the road for whatever reason and hit her. So there's a safety issue in why I would like to have a playscape there for kids in my neighborhood. There's also a quality-of-life issue. Before I moved to Madison Heights, I lived in Royal Oak. In Royal Oak, there are little pocket parks every couple of blocks. There's a small park. Even if it's not much of a playscape, even if it's just a slide and a swing set, something like that, it's there for people, and people use them. So there's a quality-of-life concern. People will use the park if there's some sort of a playscape there. And then there's also the property value issue. I know that the city had originally looked into developing that land and building some more homes, but I actually brought some copies of a study with me, a 2007 study, that shows that houses in neighborhoods with pocket parks, their values are higher. So there's a lot of different reasons to want to have a park there. And on the other side of things, on the interest side of things, as we've talked to different interest groups, the Madison Heights Men's Club was incredibly passionate about coming out and being a part of this. People that I've talked to that work for companies that have charitable giving programs have had a huge amount of interest. There's, I know Costco is just not too far from the park. There's the Plumbers Hall is right next to it. There's Sonic Temple right next to it. There's the UFCW all right next to it. These are all groups that could be interested in helping to contribute with this park. So I know there might still be some resistance to it. I know that one of the things that's come up is the maintenance costs, but hopefully, I think that if we can get enough nonprofit groups interested and try and come up with ways to defray as much of the cost as possible to the city, that people can come on board and see that this is something that will really improve the neighborhood and bring a lot of value to the people that live in the area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
The meeting's still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Hi, my name is Nicole DeSico. I also live on the block of Palmer, next to Lauren and Mike. I am their neighbor. And I know, again, everything that has been addressed could be addressed tonight on the dog shooting issue. I just wanted to speak, I guess, as a concerned neighbor and my feelings on the situation, as a fellow pet owner with a feisty cat that likes to try and sneak outside. I'm now very frightened if she were to get out and, you know, God forbid, happen to jump into that neighbor's yard. I don't know what I would do. That's my baby. Not everybody can have children, so, you know, a lot of people's pets are their children. They are their life. You know, they mean something. So in our neighborhood, our neighborhood has dogs running freely and children playing, you know, and if a stray bullet had accidentally hit an animal or a child, that just would have been... It would have been devastating, even, you know, just as devastating as it was when it hit Aurora. So I guess my concern is just for neighborhood safety. All of us kind of feel a little bit on edge now and a little terrified of the neighborhood that we're living in. And it's a wonderful block. It's a very quiet block. We all get along, and now we're kind of fearful of living there. Also, the big issue, too, would be, it's just for animal rights, period. I can't wait for the day where, you know, animals have the same rights that we do. I don't know why some people think that their lives don't mean as much as ours do. What is the difference? Do they not bleed? Do they not breathe? You know, do they not have feelings and families and, you know, friends? And, I mean, who can look in the eyes of an animal and not have some kind of feeling of love and sympathy for them? How can you look at an animal and think that their life means nothing? And I guess that's just why I'm here speaking, because I feel like all animals' lives matters just as much as ours, and I'm really hoping for the day that they get more rights along with us. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of that. I mean, that's all I can really say. I know you guys really can't do much but hear us out, but I wanted to just come up here and say what I had to say. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Good evening. My name's Michael Sutton. I live in Warren. I'm Michael Andring's uncle, kind of, sort of, related to his aunt. And I'd like to speak a little bit more on just on the dog issue, but it's a little bit beyond that. Everything's come forward about the dog shooting itself. The backseat of that is that that weapon was pointed at Lauren. With the state of affairs, with the police departments in the United States now, with all the crime that's going on, the shootings, the police shootings, et cetera, this person that was in law enforcement, the accused, I don't know him, but, you know, we have to really pay attention to what's going on. When a gun is pointed at you, I've had that happen to me, hopefully, none of you have, that's a fear you don't look back on and ever wish upon anybody else. This is a very important thing. What would have happened if the person he pointed it at had a weapon? Now you have multiple shootings. This is a sad statement. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting's still open to the public on any subject. Any other comments? Meeting open to the public? All right, we'll close this portion of the agenda. There are no communications this evening, but we do have a report. It's item D1 on the agenda from the Human Resources Director. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. State Public Act 152, as amended, limits the amount that public employers can pay toward employee medical benefit plans, and this begins January 1, 2012. Council is required to make an election each calendar year for its choice of compliance for the subsequent calendar year. As in past years, council is requested to adopt the 80%-20% employer-employee cost-sharing model as its choice of compliance under Public Act 152 for calendar year 2017. And I would note that the 20% employee cost-sharing provision has been negotiated into each of the eight union collective bargaining agreements. So staff and I recommend that council approve the resolution adopting the 80-20 healthcare cost model for 2017.
Thanks. What's the wish of City Council? Any motions on this subject?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt the 80-20 cost-sharing model as its choice of compliance under PA 152 for calendar year 2017.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Your motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the resolution adopting the 80-20 healthcare cost-sharing model under PA 152 for calendar year 2017. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is Report D2 from the Deputy City Manager. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. In 2007, council approved the AT&amp;T Initial Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement in accordance with the state law that became effective on January 1, 2007. This agreement was to cover a period of 10 years and will expire in January 2017. A renewal contract has been submitted, which maintains the same video service provider fee of 5% and a public education government or PAGA access fee of 1%, which has been included in our current adopted budget. Staff, our telecommunications counsel, Neil Leto, and I recommend that council approve this contract and authorize the city's response within 15 business days as under the Act.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council? Is there a motion from City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Yes, I move to approve this contract and authorize the city's response within the 15-business-day timeframe.
Thank you. Is there a second? Your Honor? Mr. Bliss? Support? Motion made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve the contract regarding the renewal of video services and authorize the city's response within 15-business-day timeframe under the Act. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Report D3. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. And there are two items for D3. The first is a resolution approving our Public Safety Answering Point Agreement with Oakland County, and the second is the contract for our... And the second is the contract for our next-gen 911 equipment and services contract. Our adopted current-year budget and the goal plan includes the purchase and installation of the new next-gen 911 phone system and the required training. This upgrade is required by Oakland County for all public safety answering points or PSAPs and also addresses the issue of our current 911 phone system being out of warranty and serviceability. Oakland County is replacing their legacy copper network that's been in use since 1988 with an emergency services IP network, or ESI net, which will offer many advances in processing voice, text, and related items associated with 911 calls. In accordance with the required agreement, the county will bear the financial burden of constructing and maintaining their network for our city. The city will be responsible for the equipment located inside our building where the county's network connects, and that includes the cost of the remote call processing equipment. So presented for council's consideration is a resolution which approves the required agreement delineating the duties and responsibilities between the city and the county, and it authorizes the city manager and the clerk to sign on behalf of the agreement. And I would note the city attorney's office has reviewed and approved the proposed agreement. The second item, which we would ask for a separate motion on, is that council's requested to approve the contract with Emergency Call Works, the vendor selected by Oakland County for the purchase and installation of the call processing equipment in an amount not to exceed $80,890.94, which is budgeted and available for the project. Oakland County did secure pricing for all cities located within the county and entered into the contract with ECW as the sole source provider for the call-taking equipment and installation. So again, staff and I recommend that council approve by separate motions the resolution adopting the agreement with Oakland County and then the contract with ECW.
Can I first have a motion adopting staff's recommendation to approve the public safety answering point agreement with Oakland County?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt the resolution approving the IT PSAP agreement with Oakland County and authorize the city manager and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the agreement with Oakland County. This is the first vote. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I have a motion on the second item?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the contract with ECW for next-gen 911 equipment and services.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on the second item?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I saved my discussion for the second item, but I'm actually really excited about this because when we first met in the goal session and we heard the explanation on why this is necessary, why it's coming, and what the improvements in technology will bring to the citizens, it was a very large price tag, and it was one that staff and council, we were determined to be able to find room in the budget for this. And it's incredible that not only were we able to find room in the budget, but we were able to actually save money. It's absolutely worth noting that for this upgrade, we're actually saving $57,000 from the original goal proposal. That's astounding. And I'm really, really excited. I'm proud of staff. I'm proud of our police department for being able to see what this level of next-generation technology can do for the citizens watching at home. And I'll ask Chief to come up and elaborate, but basically, this is going to allow our 911 operators to pinpoint more precisely where somebody is when they call. And there's a lot more to it, so maybe if, Mayor, if you'd be willing, if Chief could come up and give us a little bit of an explanation as to all the benefits of what we're doing here?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. There will be a lot of very beneficial things that will be coming from the new next-gen 911 system. One of the main things that's coming is text to 911. Currently, the county is answering all those calls and then transferring those calls to the local police departments, but we'll be able to accept those text to 911 calls. We'll be able to accept video to 911 calls. It's going to be a major improvement for the folks in our city that are deaf. They will have instant typing that will, as they're typing, it will be appearing on our 911 screens. And as far as GPS capabilities, right now, with the old system, the legacy system, we're within probably 100 yards of where the phone call is coming from. Now we will be within three feet. So it is a huge difference in capabilities and will allow us to get to scenes quicker, more efficiently, and hopefully save lives. And as far as to speak real quickly about the cost savings, we were able, as a police department, we were able to sit down with ECW contractors. They came in and we were able to readdress our original needs with different, lower-priced equipment, and which will do exactly the same things, only in this case, it's going to be some better things with not quite so much bulk of equipment. So we were able to save a very large sum of money.
Thank you for your hard work, Chief Haynes. Any further discussion? I'll restate the motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the contract with Emergency Call Works, the vendor selected by Oakland County for the purchase and installation of the call processing equipment in an amount not to exceed $80,890.94. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. There are no items for future public hearings, but tonight we have a one-bid award regarding the police perimeter fence. Mr. Myers?
At the September 12 council meeting, City Council approved funding for a perimeter fence around the police department rear parking lot in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Subsequently, staff issued an invitation to bid, which included the pre-bid meeting and the walkthrough with the chief. Seven vendors submitted bids which would do honor before the September 28 deadline. The lowest responsible bidder is Jafco Incorporated with a total price of $38,644. Chief Haynes has been able to speak with two of the references listed on Jafco's bid proposal, and both of them stated that they are happy with the fences built by Jafco and that the owner's been very helpful and proactive toward their needs. Accordingly, staff and I recommend that council authorize the construction of the police department perimeter fence by Jafco Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $38,644, and through the supplemental appropriation of previously approved funds are available for the project.
Thank you, sir. What's the wish of City Council on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
I make a motion that we accept the lowest responsible bidder, which is Jafco Inc., for a total price of $38,644.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss? Support?
I'll state the motion made by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve, let's see, to authorize the construction of a police department perimeter fence by Jafco Inc., who's the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $38,644. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Quickly, I just want to thank the chief for all his hard work, Ed Malik for getting up there and speaking. I was surprised. But, and all the officers, it was a great thing that they came together with council. It took a little while, but we made it, and so I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I would just like to point out, very similar to the last line item, not only was this a goal in the original goal session, this is something that Councilman Soltis championed very hard, but we were able to find a one-time $50,000 savings in the budget and allocate it towards this fence. And we actually saved almost $12,000 off of that $50,000 allotment. That's incredible, and I'm really, really proud of all the work that the council and staff put in, not just to be able to identify the need and solve it in the first place, but to solve it in a way that saved our taxpayers almost $12,000. That's excellent government, and I'm proud as heck tonight. We've had now $70,000 in savings, if you're keeping track at home. That's amazing, and no doubt will be improved, or will be applied towards improving quality of life and public safety for all of our residents sitting at home.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item?
One last thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Soltis, continue.
The owner of Jafco is here. All right, so you'll be able to start tomorrow? Sorry. We're counting on you. Thank you.
It's nice to see the contractor here. Thank you for taking the time. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have no ordinances for consideration, nor do we have unfinished business. Can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of September 26, 2016?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Still moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Any discussion on adopting the minutes from 9/26/16 as printed? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I forgot to say motion carries on the fence. The motion also carried for that. Okay, we'll go to appointments. Does anyone on City Council have a nomination to any of our boards and commissions? Are there any mayor's appointments up? I didn't see any.
No mayor's.
Okay, so we don't have any executive session planned tonight, so before I adjourn the meeting, I'd invite any closing comments from City Council. Typically, we start with Mr. Corbett, but tonight we'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Mark Bliss.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I would like to thank everybody who came out and spoke tonight. It's great to see so many people willing to stand in front of, you know, this governing body. I wish we had more answers for everybody who spoke on all the various topics, but it was really great to hear what you had to say, and trust me when I say that we were listening. We were very actively listening, and we appreciate you being here more than you'll know. Second, Your Honor, I've been kind of laying out my goal proposals on, you know, once-a-meeting basis. Well, now that they're formally submitted, I'd love to recap them and share the couple that I haven't shared yet with the audience, so that way you know what are some of the discussions that we will be having as we go into the goal session. I mean, you saw two of them approved and finalized tonight. So these goals actually can happen, and a lot of it really ties into prudent budgeting and expanded open bid processes that allow us to save money and then apply those savings to places that we, as a council, have prioritized. So here's some of the things that I've covered. I talked about creating a formal process that would help us to identify parkland acquisition targets. These are things that we're doing on an ad hoc basis, where somebody would approach the city and let us know that they might be interested in selling a property, or if it's a property that we've already detailed and targeted. But we don't have an ongoing process in place that would bring those parcels to council for discussion. And so it's not a high-cost target unless we did find a piece of property that we wanted to move on, but by detailing that process, we won't miss out on opportunities where we might have in the past. Second, and very related to the first, I do have a goal of allowing and creating small pocket parks in every single neighborhood that doesn't have one within their boundaries. Now, that might mean sprucing up some that already exist. That might mean that we do have to find things to acquire, but it's something that we should be paying attention to, not because we can fix it overnight, but because if we don't pay attention to it, in 10 years, we will have not fixed anything, and it'll have gotten worse. Brevell Park was the first park that my parents ever took me to, first park that my parents ever took me to. And back then, it had a playscape. Back then, it had a lot of families in the neighborhood, and I'm really excited to see that momentum building within that neighborhood, so much so that they're not up here saying, "Hey, we need a park, and we need you to do it for us." They're saying, "How can we help you bring us a park?" And that's incredible. And so we can do our part by engaging the residents, by assisting where we can, and hopefully being able to upgrade some of those pocket parks that are in existence and maybe finding a few others in neighborhoods where children are having to cross main roads in order to get to a play structure. I have three children of my own. That idea of crossing busy 13-mile with flashing yellow lights scares the death out of me. I mean, anything can happen. Any car could not be paying attention. The driver could not be paying attention, and anything can happen. So let's try to solve this problem. It's not going to be solved overnight, but it's something that we can do. I've also talked about the seasonal porta-potties. It's not something that I'm excited to be known for, but I tried to crusade to bring porta-potties to our parks, and my colleagues supported that. They helped us, you know, we found a one-time budget savings of a couple thousand dollars, allocated that towards a test run of bringing family porta-potties to some of our most populated parks, and I'd really like to see that continue and potentially expand. Finally, I talked about a formal process for code enforcement that penalizes frequent offenders and increases checks on those properties. It's going to require some staff time. It's going to require manpower, and it's something that we need to be talking about because we can't have a small percentage of homes in Madison Heights impacting the overall, I guess, beautification of the city as a whole. And so I'd really like to see us look into that. Again, very small financial costs, but there will be one, so we'll have to find the savings for that. Now, the things that I haven't talked about are increasing the amount of city events. There used to be a lot more events, some, and actually most, within the Parks and Rec Department. I'd like to find some budgetary savings that would allow us to do more events for our public, things that we could rotate within parks across the entire community, so we can engage neighborhoods, and we can work with those community groups that we know love to run programming and really bring that neighborhood atmosphere back into the city. And second, and this is a very long-term goal, but we've had two public surveys on our Parks and Rec Department. Many of you participated. A lot of you may not even know that they existed, though. So we ran two surveys, and in both surveys, where we asked the question of what would you like to bring to the parks, in both instances, a splash pad was number one. Splash pads are amazing for communities and park systems in general because typically, people will stay at that park for a very long time. It's safe. It's safe for those with disabilities, and it's just a really, I mean, I hate to say it, but refreshing way to spend a hot summer afternoon. And so it's going to take some time. There are grants, there are amazing matching grants for that type of an acquisition into the system, but it's something that we should start planning for because two separate occasions, with hundreds of residents surveyed, we were told that that is a top priority. So I want to make sure that we start that discussion, and, you know, I'm really excited to engaging the rest of my colleagues throughout this goal-setting process to make sure that we can plant the seeds. So again, 10 years don't go by, and we haven't brought anything to the city. I'm really excited to hear what my colleagues also propose, and frankly, anybody watching at home, or if you're in the audience, if there's anything that you'd like us to discuss, send us an email. All of our emails are listed on the city website, madison-hights.org. Please, email us, contact us. Tell us what you want. Tell us the way that we can best serve you. It might be an ordinance change. It might be a new policy. It might be, you know, a swing set for a park. I mean, all of those things are relevant, and we can't fix, well, we don't know. So please, help us to fix and make this city better tomorrow than it was today. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Geddings?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say this was, I think, one of the better meetings I've been to over the years. The folks in the city spoke up. It was very heartwarming. I'm sorry to hear about the dog being shot. Hopefully, everything works out on that. But it was a nice collaboration of the community here tonight, and that says a lot for the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, Mr. Myers?
No, sir, nothing tonight.
City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
I do, thank you. I just want to remind the audience and our residents that the last day to register to vote for the presidential election is tomorrow. Our office will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We'll close from 11:30 to 12:30 for lunch. You can come in and register here. You can go to the county clerk's office. You can go to any secretary of state's office. You can also register online, but let me remind you that if you register online, you will have to vote and will have to vote in person the first time you vote. Also, the absentee ballots are available for the presidential election, so if you are interested in receiving one and you are qualified to obtain one, please obtain an application from our office, and we'd be happy to help you out with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Clark?
Yes. I'm for parks 100 percent. But, you know, there was a crime committed. There's a lot of people here voicing their opinion on that. I think that we should take some of that money for the parks. The police department, the fire department, both have goals put in. Let's put some money towards that, too, to make the parks safer, so you can send your kids there, and you can sit in there and enjoy yourself. And we can only do that by supporting the police department and the fire department with the equipment that they need. We made the police department safer by putting the fence up. Now, let's make the citizens and the children of the city safer by putting a little money towards them goals. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know our mayor, Brian Hartwell, was present, as I was myself, at the firefighters' retirement party last Saturday night. He presented a proclamation to each one of them, and I just wanted to acknowledge what they have done for the, probably, average 25 years each, and also to thank Greg Lolito, our chief, for being there and being such a good chief. Paul Bolidi was a firefighter, who's now a sergeant, organized the event, along with his wife, I'm sure, and many others. But it was a nice event to honor the seven that were retiring. They are longtime friends and colleagues, because they've been around about as long as I have, but I wanted to say their names again to acknowledge their work for Madison Heights. Michael Hoag, Fire Marshal Shawn Knight, John Morgan, Tim Kennedy, who actually assembled all the history of the fire department for over 60 years, Lieutenant Scott Rockman, Dan Garvey, and Michael Stefanka. They have been wonderful servants to our city personally. They helped when my husband had a heart attack and my mom had a stroke, and I want to thank them for their personal services, as well as all the citizens of Madison Heights that have been affected by their care. They are very important to us, and we wish them the best of retirement. And there's a lot of new people, a lot of new firefighters that are coming up the ranks, and I've met most of them, and they're all, I think, you could be in very good hands. I would like to also thank the Men's Club Fire, who helped raise that Gravel Park, the status of that park last weekend, by planting the trees, the neighbors that surrounded that. And I also want to thank Lowe's and Home Depot, who donated the cost to those trees. There were 15 of them planted. So I think we're on the up and ups with Gravel Park. I'd also want to add that council is going to be hosting tree lighting again. I know it's ahead of time, but you can write in your calendar, and it will be November 28th. The council meeting will begin at 6:30 with some festivities out in front of City Hall. And there will be only one council meeting in December, and that is on the 19th. I would also like to make sure that you all get out and vote, no matter what your preference is, but please, get out and vote. You all have that right, and I consider a responsibility for everybody here. The Madison Heights Community Roundtable will be sponsoring a meet-the-candidate luncheon, which might be your only chance to get to know the people that we don't always see around the city, who are running for office in state positions and county positions. And that will be held on Wednesday, October 19th, beginning at 11:30. The doors will be open at 11:00, and it lasts till about 1:30. There is a light lunch that we serve. You don't have to eat there, but if you do, it's $8, and you need to reserve your space by calling Jackie Owens at Lamphier High School. I also wanted to let you know that I have been attending SEMCOG meetings for several years, but there are regional issues that are brought up, and Bill Anderson, who is a employee of SEMCOG, has issued an awareness drive for us under K-12 education funding nosedives from 2007 down to 2012. And I'd just like to read to you some of the things that he mentioned. He is going to be focusing on local government issues across our region, and he did make the statement, and I know our teacher here will agree, "There is no other public service or private, for that matter, that is more closely scrutinized than K-12 education. No other public employee has as many close personal relationships with those that they serve than does a teacher." It is not unique to Michigan, but the educational system derives more decisions on where a person decides to raise a family than any other government service. In two years before enactment of Proposal A, Michigan ranked 10th in the nation in per capita expenditures for K-12 education. And once Proposal A passed, we were able to maintain that status. But in the last few years, between 2007 and 2012, the Michigan expenditures for K-12 education dropped 10 percent, dropping the state from 8th in the nation in expenditures to 25th. That's a drastic drop. And I think what I'm also pointing out the fact is that when you do go and vote, especially for your state legislators, that you pay attention to their focus on education and how important it is to them, because it's very important to our city and to our representatives here. And Lauren, we wish you the best on your dog. We hope that Aurora recovers well, and we thank you for being here to tell us your story. And thank you for all the people that you brought with you. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. One clarification, our December meeting is, is what date?
Your Honor, it's December 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was referring to the city calendar, so I will change that. December 12th?
Yes.
All right.
We'll get that updated. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad you told me that.
Councilman Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, appreciate everybody coming out, related with the dog shooting, having to sit through all this other city business stuff for an hour and a half. Appreciate your patience, understanding. I'm glad to see residents come and speak out. I think that's wonderful. Sometimes, you know, I'm a third year into this, and sometimes I felt like I was the guy in C-SPAN, you know, talking to empty chairs. But it's great to see residents come out when they're passionate about an issue, if they want to see some justice. It does work. It has worked with the flood. This place was incredibly packed, and that worked out. There were other instances with waste management that worked out once. So it does. I mean, when the city council is able to act, we do, in a unified way. So thank you. Also, I want to mention that there are two officers that were brutally murdered in California recently by a hateful criminal. Another crazed, insane guy, completely sad. One was a new mother, I think she had a six-month-old. Another officer was 35 years on the job, he was about to retire in December. It's horrible, that just continues on and on, and I'm upset that we don't hear more about, more outrage about these killings of police officers than we do. But with that in mind, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. I do appreciate that you came to City Council to address your elected leaders. It's not just a political issue you brought up, it's a family issue. I mean, it's a safety issue. And when shots are fired in any of our neighborhoods, you know, us as policymakers, our first instinct is, okay, is our community safe? And, you know, it's my understanding that the weapons at issue have been seized pending further investigation by the county. They're returned. Okay. Well, it's my understanding that the county is reviewing this. The city realized this is an issue for a larger government to handle than the limitations that the city justice system can provide. As policymakers, we work for you, the mayor and city council. We're not the law enforcement, we're not the prosecutor, we're not the judge, we're the policymakers. I heard from many of you that said, that helped define the rest of our role as policymakers, that we do have the public's ear on moral and ethical and safety issues. And you will find all seven council members will be willing to advance your beliefs and your statements and your proposals on this subject. But you must understand, and all of us must understand, that we must believe and defend the independence of our law enforcement and our prosecutor and our judicial system. And it would be very improper for me, who did not witness the alleged crime, to get the judge on the phone or to get the prosecutor on the phone. I mean, I'm not siding with the shooter, I'll say the alleged shooter, because I wasn't there. But that's just the point. I wasn't there, and so I cannot be a fact witness, and none of us could be. But we are policymakers. We're your policymakers. And if we don't respond to you, if we don't pass the policies and the ordinance that you want to see, vote us out of here and take over. But I don't think you have to do that. I think you have seven members of City Council who are here for you. There was one of our residents, Mary Bush, I'll use your name. That was her challenge to us, that you will find, hopefully, confidence in us, that we're here for you. We're here to be creative. We're not just going to be part of the system that just says, "I trust the system." We want to be some creative problem solvers. And so I'm not trying to talk out of both sides of my mouth. I am, because the criminal justice system and our constitution protects the rights of the accused. But Councilwoman Scott made that important pivot, that we're here to address and to state our values, that the illegal discharge of a firearm should not happen, should never happen, and should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. And the fact that an innocent animal was injured, maimed, maybe because of an allegedly careless act, it's disgusting, unacceptable in civilized society, in any city, in any country, not just ours. So please, I'm asking for my PACA. I'm asking for residents at large, I'm asking for the family and the owners of this beautiful animal, to work with City Council, so that we can craft a message and so that we can craft policies that respond to this very important issue. And like Councilman Soltis said, thank you for being patient in our business meeting. These regular city council meetings do not often provide a dialogue, so please forgive our stuffiness, but that's just the way we do it. All the council members live in the city. I live on Palmer in this neighborhood. I lived on Dartmouth, the same block as this. But it doesn't matter if I live on your street. It doesn't matter where the councilmen live. It's a small enough city, so please reach out to us. I'll just leave it at that for tonight, but I look forward to the continued conversation. Any more comments from City Council? Is there any further business before the City Council hearing? None, I adjourned the meeting. Good night.